Call the Monday, April 8, 2019 work session of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucasberg.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Semis.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. Dr. Pat.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Tonight's public work session presentations are all related to the FY 2020 proposed general operating and capital budgets. The first presentation is a capture of the total proposed budget through a document entitled Budget at a Glance. During the FY 2016-17 budget, staff developed this one-page document that provides an overview of the key components of the budget and assists citizens with an understanding of the budget. Ms. Gloria Washington, budget officer, will make the presentation. The second presentation revolves around one of City Council's four big things: lifelong learning, education, partnerships. In my budget message presented on March 25th, I stated that a lifelong learning community works to enhance citizen engagement, reduce crime in property, increases productivity, and affords citizens every opportunity to become local, regional, and global contributors to society. Mrs. Rosalyn Oglesby, Assistant to the City Manager over the past two years, has studied all components of education and has acquired an in-depth knowledge of the city's strategic data-driven analysis relating to public education and funding. The third and final presentation is entitled School Funding Formula. In the FY 2020 budget message, I am requesting City Council to establish a school formula committee to convene immediately after the budget adoption with representatives of both bodies to review the school's current funding level, existing funding models used in Virginia, and develop a proposed funding formula for the FY 2021 budget. Mrs. Ann Seward of Ann Seward Consulting has worked with localities across the Commonwealth in developing school funding formulas. Mrs. Seward served the city in an interim status for a few months as we hired, as I hired, the CFO, Mrs. Spivey, in 2018. We will start with Mrs. Washington.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucasberg, and members of City Council. One of the communication documents that has been a success in previous budget years is the Budget at a Glance. This two-page document provides a brief overview of key components of the City Manager's budget message to include the proposed general fund budget, tax and rate adjustments, compensate adjustments, and the city's local share of $52.8 million for Portsmouth Public Schools included in the City Manager's FY 2020 budget. That's included in the overview section. This document also outlines City Council's four big things: Portsmouth, the best place for business, Portsmouth, the best place to live, tell the Portsmouth story, and lifelong learning. The second page of the Budget at a Glance document provides pie charts for the proposed general fund revenues and expenditures, outlining various broad categories for each chart. These charts are included in the proposed document pages 4-23 and 4-28. The lifelong learning pie chart is displayed and will be discussed in further detail by Ms. Oglesby in her presentation. Also included is a snapshot of proposed and ongoing CIP projects, which are included in detail in the proposed document. The section entitled Capital Improvement Program, starting with page 14-4, which includes a table of contents by project title. Important dates are outlined near the end of the Budget at a Glance document to include the city's public hearing dates of April 9 and April 23 at 7:00 p.m. and budget adoption on May 14. Citizens can view the entire 2020 proposed budget online at www.porsmouthva.gov/finance. And this proposed document was posted online on March 25 after the City Manager's presentation. And I will entertain any questions you have.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
I'll take your question. Mrs. Oglesby.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Tonight, I will review the FY 2020 proposed funding, operating, and capital improvement budgets for lifelong learning. Portsmouth continues its commitment of lifelong learning by funding major components to include Portsmouth Public Schools, community cultural arts and music-supported programs. It also includes citywide educational programs, juvenile, youth, and family-supported services. The total amount proposed for lifelong learning in FY 2020 is $70.1 million. This is a correction to Sunday's March 31 add in the Virginia Pallet. The correction is caused by an adjustment to the indirect funding level to Portsmouth Public Schools to include annual debt service payments. I will explain later in this presentation the correction. The budget includes $313,330 for educational initiatives and programs of which $264,020 directly impacts Portsmouth Public Schools. Some of the programs are Richmond Ballet, Starbase Victory, Academy of Music, Virginia Arts Festival, Virginia Museum of Contemporary Arts, and Young Audience. The proposed FY 2020 budget maintains the local share for Portsmouth Public Schools In addition to the local share and funding related to educational initiatives and programs for Portsmouth Public Schools, the city indirectly funds or directly pays $3.7 million for the following expenditures. Debt service annual payments for Virginia Public Schools Authority loan, $2.2 million; qualified zone academy bonds, $500,000; school resource officers, $388,407; landscaping services, $340,000; vehicle maintenance services for the positions, $276,778. The addition of the Virginia Public School Authority loan and the qualified zone academy bonds increased the amount of $1.7 million of indirect funding to PPS as published in the Virginia Pallet by the said amounts. Please note that the agreement between the schools and the city for vehicle maintenance services does not include salary positions. The agreement is only for services provided to maintain school buses and support fleet. The proposed budget includes a total of $9.7 million for ongoing and new projects for Portsmouth Public Schools. These projects are HVAC projects at Churchland and Wilson High Schools, James Hurst Churchill Primary Intermediate School renovations, and the newest of these projects, Hardes Manor and Churchill Elementary Schools roof coating. According to the Virginia Department of Education, projected FY 2019 and projected FY 2020 state payments report, the city's required local effort for standards of quality programs and required local match for incentive and lottery-funded programs is $23.4 million for FY 2020. This is represented by the lower blue bar on the chart. As a reminder, the proposed amounts of funding for Portsmouth Public Schools are $52.8 million for the local share, $9.7 million for CIP projects, and $3.7 million for indirect funding. These three areas brings the city's proposed contribution to Portsmouth Public Schools for FY 2020 to $62.4 million, which is represented by the top gray bar in the chart. This exceeds the RLM and the RLE by $4.3 million, represented by the middle bar. This chart shows the historical levels from the city above the RLE and RLM levels by the state from 2013 to 2020. The blue bar represents the RLE and RLM. The local share is represented by the orange bar. The difference is the gray bar, and the percentage is the line you see increasing up on the chart that's yellow.
Keep it there a minute so that I can see.
Okay, sorry.
For the public that's watching at home, could you explain what the RLE and RLM, what that is?
The RLE is the required local effort for the standards of quality programs, and the RLM is the required local match for the incentive and lottery funds. As part of the reports to the General Assembly, RD 42, Actual Physical Year 2018 Required Local Effort and Required Local Match Certification of Budget Physical Year 2019, it compares local expenditures for operations versus what is required by the state. This table shows the required local effort for Portsmouth for FY 2018 was $20.98 million. The actual local expenditures reported by Portsmouth Public Schools for operations was $52.22 million for SOQ programs. This amount above the required, the amount above the required RLE is $31.24 million, which is 148.87% above what is required by the state. Portsmouth funds education, $7.6 million above SOQ average of its peers.
So, on your last, go back to the last slide. On that slide, in 2018, you were giving us a history of the local effort and the local match. And there, it exceeds a little bit over 120%. It doesn't, it doesn't get to 148%.
This chart, that, this is just the history for 2020. No, it does not.
No, 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 no. For 2018, what we're talking about is 2018. 2018 there, it's a little over 120%.
Percent.
The percentage, right?
Right, because this chart here takes into account the RLE and the RLM.
That's all.
Compared to this chart, which only takes into account the RLE.
Okay.
Three different things.
Okay.
Nate, did you have a?
No, no.
I'm good.
Dr. Pat.
No, she, I was getting ready to say something, but she explained it.
Okay.
Okay.
As part of the FY 2020 proposed budget, the City Manager recommended freezing the current allocation to Portsmouth Public Schools. The following frames provide support for your consideration. In December of 2018, the University of Richmond posted an article called "Virginia Schools' Enrollment Decline in 2018 for the First Time in Decades." In this article, it noted that the state enrollment fell by a little over 2,000 students in 2018. This is the first decline since 1984. Although this is a relatively small number for the state, this may not be the same at the local level. Declining student enrollment numbers affect the amount of funding the state will provide to school divisions in support of education. The article states, "This leaves the local school division to address the loss of funding by making tough decisions in terms of staffing, programming, reorganization, consolidation, or seeking additional funding from the locality or localities in which they are serving based on the school systems addressing the components that was just discussed." On page 103 from the Portsmouth Public Schools' proposed FY 2020 budget, you will find this chart that displays the history of the school division's enrollment and future enrollment projections. Please note that it does not include the red numbers, which show the decline between the school years. This chart shows Portsmouth Public Schools averaging a decline in enrollment of approximately 230 students for each year. In order to ensure quality education, the General Assembly established a composite index of local ability to pay. Local indices demonstrate a lesser ability to contribute toward the cost of education received a larger share of state funding. The composite index is calculated using three indicators of a locality's ability to pay for public education. They are the true value of real property, weighted at 50%, adjusted gross income, weighted at 40%, and taxable retail sales, weighted at 10%. This calculation is done every two years. As you see from the local composite index chart, taken from page 19 in the FY 2020 proposed public schools budget, Portsmouth Composite Index is on a decline, and at 0.2462, it is the lowest in the region. Although the city's composite index is 24.62%, the index is adjusted to maintain an overall statewide local share of 45% and an overall state share of 55%. What this means is that the state determines that the city can afford to pay X, but the state will hold us at Y, but the city is making a choice to pay at Z. For example, if the state says their public education for Portsmouth is $100, then based off of our index or our percentage, we're required, saying that we should be paying $25. However, they will maintain us to keep it even across the board statewide at 45% or $45. However, Portsmouth pays Z, which could be $65, which is more than what the state require us to pay when it comes to determining the support for local education.
Amen. Yes, sir.
And help me understand this. So, in terms of our total dollars that we contribute to education, in the slide, it was, I think, $70 million. And it included our capital improvement, these other support services. But help, help me understand, what are direct and what are indirect costs as it relates to Portsmouth Public Schools?
So, direct costs are the, is the amount that City Council appropriates directly that we transfer over to the school? So, those are monthly payments that are calculated, $52.8 million.
The $52, right. Okay.
So, but the indirect is what the city directly pays, which will otherwise be covered by the school, but we're taking over those costs. That's the money, that's the debt, and anything like that, funding programs that support the public schools, so it covers all those things.
Okay, but I have, I guess I have a follow-up question to that. Under the copy of the legislative mandate directing required local effort and required local match, local match data collection, explain what this means to me, because I'm not that smart. The total expenditures for operation defined as total expenditures less all capital outlays, expenditures for debt service, facilities, non-regular day school programs, and it gives what those are, such as day, adult education, preschool, non-local education programs, and any transfers to regional programs will be calculated. Explain what that means to me, as it relates to this total number that doesn't go directly to this, because the capital improvement, I understand it's all lumped together because it is an expense, but it doesn't go directly to the students and the schools?
So, not in that explanation that you gave, but in the past, the schools used to be responsible for their own capital improvement programs. The city made the decision to move the schools' capital projects into the city's fund. Now, when they do their calculation back to the state, which we will go over a little bit later in terms of their reporting of expenditures, those things are backed out because not every locality across the state of Virginia may have that included, like we do not have it included, in that cost, which is directly to that, to that school. Some may have it and some may not, so that to make it neutralize or normalize across the board, those things are not calculated into that.
Right, but I guess my confusion is, when we, when we put the information out there, we're putting it as a total, right?
It is a total.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that is exactly what the city pays.
That's all the city pays.
But those total costs don't go directly to the students and teachers and all of that?
If you're talking about capital projects, that, that does, because it maintains the buildings, it maintains the landscaping, it maintains their fleet service and stuff like that, that does directly impact education.
What you're saying, if, if we didn't pay it, they would have to pay it.
Exactly, yeah.
And so, because we pay it, they have more money to put towards the.
To instruction.
Yeah. And I think that was, that was my same question, so I was wondering if all of the cities across the board have to report their capital improvement and their direct and indirect into there? Is it a requirement, or do you get the option to choose whether you include it in there or not? So, so that we can be on one page, you know, is Portsmouth and Norfolk and Suffolk and Newport News, are they all reporting their information the same way?
And I guess we'll get a little bit, I'm sorry, Dr. Pat.
I was getting ready to say, with the school funding formula, as in Norfolk, in talking with their city manager, their SROs in schools are paid for by Norfolk Public Schools, not over in the city of Norfolk's budget. We do not have a school formula. However, looking at what, and Mrs. Seward will explain, look at, looking at all of the things that the city is paying out of its budget that are directly supporting education, as Mayor said, if we weren't doing it, then it wouldn't get done.
They would have to pay it.
Um, over on our side, we are covering. But in the school formula, landscaping, police, everything, when I said, well, we pay for all the SROs, and he said, oh, you all, you all are still doing that? But in that, it is where the, the schools are responsible for paying it. Because all of those officers are in those schools for a full, that's their workday. That's their work.
So, I guess what we're trying to decide, the, the state makes no mandate, or there is no requirement, that everybody reports all of their direct and indirect costs?
She's going to cover that a little further in here.
Okay.
Yeah, there are some requirements.
Yeah, I want to make sure I get a question or two here.
I want to stop you on one thing. You mentioned the SROs, and you went back to, on your slide number six, on indirect funding, you had school resource officers, 388, 407.
That's school security officers.
That's the security.
Those are school resource officers. That's different from the school's security officers.
Right.
The school's security officers are those officers that hire directly by the school system.
They're not our.
Police officers.
Police officers.
No.
No, but keep in mind, the city did join with the schools last year as part of the budget, and they were trying to hire a complement of 19 SSOs, and we provided funding for nine on the city side.
But nine, in that, in the 19.
So, is that included in that figure?
Yes. But that's money that goes directly over to the schools. That's why it's not separated out here.
Okay. Thank you.
But that's just a confusion. Shouldn't that say school security officers, not resource officers?
No, these are security resource officers directly paid by the city. The school's security officers, it's the money that we transfer directly to the schools that they pay for.
Right, I just trying to get, so people understand the difference. A resource officer is a sworn police officer that has a gun. A SSO school security officer is not armed, their security for the school. That's, that's what the difference of the two acronyms is.
Right.
Any other questions on this side? I'll go on.
Okay. Okay. Every September, each local school division is required to submit an annual report of expenditures for the prior fiscal year. According to the, to the Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-90, entitled Annual Report of Expenditures, states every school board shall submit at least once, once each year to the governing body or bodies appropriating funds to the school board, a report of all of its expenditures. Such reports should also be made available to the public either on the school division's website, if any, or in hard copy at the central school division office on template prescribed by the Board of Education. This is the template that the Board of Education has developed.
So, this is to Lisa's point, where everybody in the Commonwealth has to do something exactly the same.
That's right.
Right.
That's required, that's the code to require.
By reaching out to the Virginia Department of Education, I was able to obtain copies of the annual report of expenditures from 2014 through 2018. I will review the latest reports submitted by Portsmouth Public Schools in September of 2018. Under the recapitulation expenditure section of the report, it shows that the Portsmouth Public School Division expenditures for FY 2018. It also shows the beginning year local balance for FY 2018 from the prior fiscal year was $17.7 million. That's this number right here.
That's the prior.
So, they had $17.7 at the start of the year?
According to this report, yes.
And this information comes from the school system?
This information is to come, goes to the state from the school system.
I think your answer is yes.
Yes, yes.
Total revenues for FY 2018 were $172.1 million. Total expenditures were $172 million, leaving the local end-of-the-year balance for FY 2018 at $17.8 million.
That's pretty cool.
Would that be encumbrances? How can they have a balance?
It wouldn't be encumbrances, because encumbrances act like an expenditure.
They just wash.
That says balance.
In speaking with the Director of Budget for the Virginia Department of Education, he indicated that the $17.8 million is all local, all federal, and all state funding, that all returns at the end of the year to the governing body for consideration of reappropriation, that it is all local dollars once it hits there.
Encumbrances don't show up as a fund balance.
No, no.
So, that should have been a zero in that block.
Well, that's what I was looking for, is a zero.
According to the school's 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the report total fund and balance for all funds is 62 point, 62 point, no, $6.2 million. If you compare the school's CAFRA total fund balance with the 2018 annual report of expenditures end-of-the-year fund balance, the two numbers differ by $11,544, meet $544,765.
Are you telling us that the number far right on 18 should be the same as the end-of-the-year balance on page 17?
Yes.
Yes. And Mr. Lanzar, for the. Yes, and Mr. Lanzar for the state said the two numbers must be the same.
Question?
Yes, Shannon.
Okay, so, so looking at the two numbers, there's 11 million dollar difference, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so, if, if all of this is true, then there's 11 million dollars out there somewhere. Would that be, would that be safe to say?
These are, these are the figures, these are the correct figures.
That's the question I'm asking, if, if these figures are true.
I can't answer if we're the 11 or if there's a.
Well, well, but there's 11 million dollars that's not there.
Difference.
That's not accounted for.
Somewhere.
Right, somewhere.
One thing, the question, that's, that's right, I mean, there's a delta between the two numbers of 11, but why isn't that a zero either on 18 or on 17? I mean, why do you have a balance in the first place?
They both should be zero.
Your question is very valid.
Yeah, I was, I was going there, but go ahead.
Yeah, the question, it would make more sense for it to be zero, because that, that's what you anticipate. We have people tell us that at, at council meetings, that they don't have a fund balance showing that they do. Bill?
Explain to the public where the numbers on the CAFRA come from and what the CAFRA is.
Okay, the numbers on the CAFRA, and I'm going to have to step over here, this shows the fund balance from their overall general fund, this shows their school grants, fund balance, this shows their school food services or cafeteria fund balances, and this shows that the school's textbook fund balance, and this is how you get to the 62 for the grand total of the fund balances for Portsmouth Public School as reported in their CAFRA.
Actually, I, I should ask the question.
Okay.
We're playing with, who did the CAFRA? Who produced the numbers?
Portsmouth Public Schools.
Okay, they did their own audit?
Yes, they have to carry backup.
Okay.
They do the CAFRA, the CAFRA is reviewed by the auditor.
Right.
Right.
That's right.
And these figures?
That we make them aware, A, of the impropriety, that we asked them, could they run down or run the figures again to make sure there's no error, that we discuss it with them to try and, and see what, you know, was it just something that's an error or a mistake or?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, on last Tuesday, we met with the Superintendent and his team, which consisted of five, his comptroller, Director of Finance, his Grants Officer, his CFO, another budget person, Dwight, and then a gentleman that completes the annual school report, which I don't know what his school title. We presented all of this, asking questions, and at the end of that, about an hour and a half meeting, Dr. Brakes indicated he would get back with me. And so, from Tuesday of last week till today, we have not gotten anything back. However, on another matter which addresses grants, Mrs. Hugh, I'll say CFO, Assistant CFO, has sent to them questions as it pertains to a new request on grants that they have put before us.
I'm sorry, go ahead, you follow up?
Have they also been made aware of what this implies, the implications of?
No, I didn't get into that, we are waiting, we're giving them an opportunity to answer our questions that we have.
Do they know how serious it is?
I, I would think so.
My question, I guess I'm looking at this and unassigned and, and how funds are left over in school grants and textbooks, we, we allowed them to receive their funding non-categorical, so, but they, they go in and make their budget categorical, so this is how the funding is ending up, I mean, because we give it to them unassigned, so I'm just wondering how they have, how did they determine what was left and which?
We can't explain that, and we're waiting.
If it's non-categorical, how do you know that you have 3.6 million left?
It's just us that's non-categorical, they got it.
Okay, they, they got it, that's right.
Bill, next. The report from the state, I think I heard you say that you requested the report from the state.
Yes.
Is this the first time we've received such a report?
Yes, I have asked, I have asked for the report since I arrived in 2016. This year, we asked multiple times, I even gave the Superintendent, when last budget, the page which you see up there, to say, this is the report that we need, because we have not gotten it and we have to be stewards of taxpaying dollars. Mrs. Oglesby, I asked her to reach out, because we could not find it on their website, and we got it from the State Department, which we are rightfully due, and you are rightfully due each year to review.
Okay, Shannon's asked for it.
So, just so I'm clear, on, on the grant side, those are typically, are those reimbursement types of, of, of funding vehicles? Do you have to expense the money first and then be reimbursed for grants? Is that the way it works? How does that work?
According to Mr. Falk, he indicated that this was a reimbursable type fund, so they have to create.
So, to my question, do you have to spend the money first?
They have to create this expense, and then they send it in.
I have a question, but that school grants, though, that's federal and foundation grants?
It's a mixture of state, federal, and then other funding sources.
So it could be a variety of ways.
Right, yeah.
You actually get the money, then spend it.
When comparing the end of the year balances for Portsmouth Public Schools with the annual report of expenditures the school division completes for the state by the respective year, the numbers do not match. As Dr. Pay, as Dr. Patton stated, according to Mr. Ed, Edward Lanzar, Director of Budget for the Virginia Department of Education, the end of the year balances reported on the state report should match the fund balances as reported in the CAFRA.
Should we go back?
Go back, I'm sorry. Don't go so fast, let them look, because they don't have it in front of them.
That's not just miscalculation.
These are the state reports that have been signed and sent to the state Department of Higher, I mean, of Public Education.
Bill? I don't know what the recommendation's going to be from staff, but I think forensic audit is in order, unless the school division can come up with a valid explanation or show us where the money is, one of the two.
Did we give them a timeline to get back with us?
No, I did not, because you would think with such information, and this is budget time, you would at least hit something Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or something.
They need to know their seriousness and improprieties, and to make a commitment on giving you the information that you need.
Just want to echo what Bill just said about the forensic audit, because this is not just something that has happened this past fiscal year, we're seeing a, a historical view that it's consistently, the numbers don't match, and again, so the people at home understand, these are not numbers that we came up with, these are numbers that they have provided to the state, their own numbers that don't match for a long period of time, and, you know, I understand, you know, Paul, your, your thing about asking for a response, but if this is, this is their financial way of doing this business for this many years before quite a few of us are even sitting here, I'm not comfortable with their response, you know?
Well, that's what I'm saying, because it's been going on so long, we possibly changed administrations, and I don't want to jump out and call someone, imply that there's an impropriety unless we close all the loopholes.
Well, I don't, my opinion is, is I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything, that's the point of having a forensic audit, somebody from outside, so it's not our numbers and their numbers.
That's accusatory.
Well, no, it's not, and the reason, the reason it's not is because, because us as the governing body ultimately are responsible for those funds from the city, so if something is done wrong, even though it was, whether, I'm not saying it was intentional mistake or whatever, ultimately, this body is responsible for those funds, so we need to do our due diligence to protect the city's funding.
Let's, let's hear from the only attorney at the table, Mr. Ashby, what's our fiduciary responsibility when faced with information like this?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, we are, when I found out about this information, certainly you all are stewards over the 52 million that you surrendered to schools for the purposes of funding, we are taking a look at some of the issues based on this report, and tomorrow, I hope to be able to tell you what you may be capable of doing in terms of trying to get to the bottom of what is actually going on here and what your responsibility is going forward, so we will have a, a more formal response for you tomorrow.
I think, Paul, did you have?
Yeah, I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm not disagreeing at any point, the only thing I'm saying is, before we blow a big breath, let's give them an opportunity to explain this with Ms. Manager, and once her and Mr. Solomon do what they need to do, then we don't have any regrets in what we do, because we will have done everything.
So below the wagon.
Yes, ma'am, that's all I'm saying.
Lisa, ask for it.
Yes, so the delta between these six years is about 10 to 15, give or take, between the CAFRA and the state, when was the last time, I mean, I've only been here three years, but when was the last time anybody on this council or in the management have seen this state annual report to be able to make this kind of determination that there's been some error?
So, it's just this in, I came in September of 15, in 16, 17 was my first budget, I knew of the, of this report and requesting it, so it's from really the 16 through, we're in the 19 now, so we're doing four years.
So, I mean, I appreciate the, the six-year compassion, but we needed to have been better stewards of requesting this information over these, this six-year period as well, so I would say, give us a time period, whether it's three days or five days, find out what happened, and then if not, then we have to be stewards over the funds and find out why there's a discrepancy.
Okay.
And.
We're not finishing.
This has been going on through several administrations, so it may not, very well may not be an administrative problem, you, you see what I'm saying? Because we got an administration that's gone, that the same thing was happening.
As I said, from here, from here to here, which is 19, we, we being, I'm the city manager, the superintendent, from here all the way to 19. So, so we're showing it all, however, these are, and, and you all may say, well, you want us to go back as far as whatever.
No, what I'm saying is that the problem exists far beyond this administration.
Yes, with 13.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying? That's what I'm saying. So, it very well may not be an administrative problem, it, the problem might lie somewhere else, other than the administration, accounting person, board members, whatever has been constant with this, that's very well where the problem may lie, and not saying that it's nefarious or anything, just saying that we need to do what we need to do, then fix it, and not touch it before we need to.
And Paul, when you say administration, you're referring to the school administration?
Yes.
Mr. Paul, Mr. Glover had to say that.
So, so I'm looking at this information, and I, I, I see the CAFRA, I see the state, and I see Dr. Patton said she came in 20, so this information was never presented like this before in this format? Is, is that what I'm understanding?
No, it's not in my tenure.
It has never been presented like this, nothing has ever been presented like this, CAFRA versus the state in this, in this total process like this.
Not in my tenure here.
Not in my tenure.
That's what I was.
My tenure either.
And he's been here 20.
Go back 20 years.
And that's, and that's the thing, we never, we've never seen that state report in the time that I've been here, that they're supposed to present that to us annually, and we've never gotten it, so, you know, in the short time I've been here, I've never had opportunity to see that, because it wasn't provided for us as the state requires.
She, she, she has more.
Examining past ordinances by the calendar year, not fiscal year, this frame shows the amount of funds that were reported by Portsmouth Public Schools as carryforward funds from prior fiscal years. These funds were used for various things such as capital improvement projects, operational needs, textbook usage, and as most recently, the establishment of the School Board Risk Management and Insurance Fund. On average, the Portsmouth Public Schools report carryforward funds is approximately 8.2 million. Please note, for 2018, this number does not include the amount identified by the Portsmouth Public Schools Board Resolution passed on February the 2nd, 2019, of 4.2 million dollars, because council has not acted on it.
That's what the asterisk means?
Yes.
So we would add.
Say that again, please.
So, this amount, this 11.1 million dollars does not include the resolution passed by the Portsmouth Public School Board in which they identified 4.2 million in grant funds for reappropriation.
So when does that get added, added in, next year?
No, it's not going to.
But, but the, the total delta for the difference between the state and the CAFRA for that, that time period's like 74.4 million dollars.
That's a lot of money. Well, that's, you're going back two slides, I think.
This one?
He was through with that.
What you're saying is that, the difference, the delta between each year totals, so. You have your hand up.
Oh, I was wondering when the 4.6, the grant fund get added into the 11, yes.
Well, that's, that's the same thing, Lisa and I are on the same page, what we're talking about is the number she just showed, the 11.1, they had identified over 4 million dollars, but if you add that 4 million to that 11, you're getting close back to that 17 that was reported on that paper.
The 4.2 million dollar letter that you received on February the 7th through the city clerk's office, immediately after we received that, the budget officer and Mrs. Oglesby met with the CFO for the schools. We could not get any answers, although we had gone through the document with a fine-tooth comb to show that there was not 4.1 million dollars to be re-appropriated. They indicated that they would get back with us. From end of February till Tuesday's meeting, the first item on their agenda was a new request for 7.1 million of, of what they said were new grant funds, and I spoke and said they're.
Is that a four or in addition to the four?
They didn't even address the four, we asked about the four, but we couldn't get any, we, we focused on what they came with, and I told them that was not new money, that there is no new money. And then they explained, which we're still, we are still trying to understand, in fact, Mrs. Spivey was in my office today as the CFO, I'm asking her, asking her, and asking her, and she just said to me, Dr. Patton, I can't explain, I, I just can't explain it, because what was shared was that they get grants for five years, three years, two years, and that when they get the grants. and that when they get the grants, and one of the grants they mentioned was special education, that may be a 5 million, that the grant comes in, and they only, and the grant is for five years, but they only appropriate in the first year. And then after the first year, it drops off. Stand up and explain, you the expert in CFO.
Will you go to the mic, please?
Because Mrs. Spivey was in the meeting and trying to ascertain.
My understanding of how staff describe the discrepancy in the grant funds is that when they receive a multi-year grant, it gets recorded in their current year. And that any money that's not spent in that year, just they have not been asking for, you know, reappropriation of that money, so it's just gone away.
Does it get spent?
They never answered.
Well, I'd say the, they indicated the reason that it came, that they discovered it this year, and at the end of, while their CAFRA was being prepared, is that the expenditures were higher than the revenues. And, you know, and that shouldn't be possible. And that's where they discovered that they had federal grants that hadn't been totally utilized.
Thrown down.
So, to your point, so I had a conversation with Mr. Falk. And to his credit, he just, he recently came here, the new CFO. So we need to understand the scope of what we're talking about here. And the truth of the matter is, on the grants, you know, getting a 5 million dollars for a five-year grant, if they had processes that weren't in place to record that, that can be explained. Is that correct or is that not correct?
No.
Well, the appropriation lapse.
The staff indicated that their financial system, which is the same financial system we use, can account for the multi-year grants in multi-years. The discrepancy was that in the CAFRA, they're reporting it as a single year, and so it's dropping, it's dropping off. So if it's been, if it's getting recorded in that first year, then that, to be able to maintain it, would have to be part of the reappropriation request.
Okay. Yes. Thank you.
Well, my question was, is the whole grant, if it's a five-year grant, for example, is it all being appropriated in the first year? And so there's funds left over after the end of that first year, and it's not being re-appropriated in subsequent years? Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, that's what we are assuming.
But at the end of the year, even any grant money that is not used is supposed to be returned by June 30th back to council?
It's all a part of the reappropriation, all monies.
Over the last three fiscal years, Portsmouth Public Schools provided cost of living raises to all of its employees. Using the information from page 28 of the Portsmouth Public Schools FY 2020 proposed budget, this graph shows the history of the pay raises by the school division. The last two pay raises provided by PPS were done so without any additional funding from the school, me from the city. In addition, for those two years, PPS received reappropriation from City Council for unspent funds from the prior year. As part of the 2019 General Assembly session, there is a proposed raise for SOQ-funded positions. The General Assembly reconvened on April 3rd to address the Governor's Amendment and proposed vetoes. As part of the session, the General Assembly concurred with the Governor's Amendment as it related to the compensation supplement for school divisions. However, there is a clarification in the language regarding qualification requirement, which requires additional analysis. Using the, I'm sorry.
One of the things I want us to be clear on too, and clarifying information, when the schools gave the raises, for example, in 2017, and I believe last year, I know the city didn't give additional dollars for that, but they did have to make cuts to programs and other things. So that, you know, when we telling the whole story, we got to tell the whole story.
We have to see that to validate it.
But we got to tell the whole story. That's all I'm saying.
We haven't validated.
Somehow it doesn't job, though, when you end up at the end of the year with a fund balance.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but there's three sides to every story.
That is the key there. Why you say you're cutting programs when you got money left over at the end of the year? That doesn't balance.
But Bill, just like she just said.
Doesn't balance.
But all I'm just saying with you is, we don't see that. We see this on a piece of paper. We haven't heard their side, and we haven't seen their stuff.
Well, we.
Okay, in all fairness.
We know they have money left over.
Okay, well, how do you know that?
And unaccounted for.
How do you know that?
Because they provided the figures for the state.
If you know that, then you should, then you should ask that they come before us, and they should be able to indicate to us where that money is, Bill.
Let's go back.
You can't make that, you can't make that.
We talking about, Shannon? We've seen the information that they provided themselves.
You've been here 20 years. You hadn't seen that information, had you, in 20 years?
Because the school system hadn't provided it.
Well, thank you. You've been here 20 years, and you said you hadn't seen it before. So now you're real smart now.
Because the school system hadn't provided it, Shannon. Let's go back to slide 17. Now, that slide right there is the template for the state, and the numbers in that slide are the school boards?
Yes.
Okay. So all those numbers are generated by the school boards. Can you go to the next slide? That, the CAFRA is done by the school finance and audited by the auditor. Is that correct?
Yes.
We got two different numbers, but from the same source.
There you go. That's what I'm sharing with you. It's two different. So what's the right number?
The question is, if you're going, you would think if you cut a program, then you wouldn't have any money left over.
Both of them are wrong because they should be zeros.
Yeah.
Either way is wrong.
Go one more slide. And so both of those columns are generated by the school. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Paul.
Mr. Mayor, we're forming perceptions and acting like accountants, and the process hasn't worked out yet. Please let Ms. Manager get with them and not give them a shotgun date of, I want this by then. Talk with them and say, this is a serious matter. When can we get this done? We need it as soon as possible. Re-adjust the figures or letters and know what, you know, what's going on, where the arrows are. And then we can do the things we're doing now. But we're kind of going down the track, and we don't have enough information. We have to exhaust this process before we, you know, go where we're going. We're not accountants, yet we can do some accounting, but let's not do all of that. Let's let the people give it to us. Now, the next meeting, if there's no justification, see, we are meeting ahead in what we're doing. Let's let Ms. Manager do her job and get back with us.
We have one more frame there. Okay.
Okay. Using the survey conducted by the Virginia Beach Public Schools of local school divisions, human resource departments, you are seeing the ranking of the seven cities for teacher salaries by experience. Highlighted is Portsmouth Public Schools in those respective years.
Any questions from this slide?
So we're pretty comparative to other localities for the experience, zero to 30 years.
Yes.
And a little higher in some areas.
And look at Hampton, larger city.
Consistently bottom.
It's consistent.
Doesn't want to do.
Consistent.
Paul.
But what are we comparing? Are we comparing, are we putting all the salaries together and dividing by the number of teachers? Or are we beginning teachers, blocking them together?
Goes from zero to, teachers from zero, teachers who are just starting in the first column, teachers who've been with the division for five years, teachers who have been with the division 10 years. And this is across the seven cities of Hampton Roads. That's what you see over there, Virginia Beach. Then you go all the way over in 15, and 15 years and 20 years, there is compression, which, when you look at compression, when in 2016, 17, we had an issue with compression with fire and police. But no one else was addressed during that budget but fire and police to address the compression. And that's just how you would deal with that, to move those persons who are in those categories to where respectively they need to be. And then you have the 25 years and the 30 years, where we are above Norfolk, Newport, Newshampton in both of those outer years of well-experienced teachers.
So somebody's been crying the blues for nothing.
Lisa.
Yes. Is there any geographic data or any type of data that would show us the teachers that live in Portsmouth versus those who live outside of our city? And the same with city employees and fire and police? Do we have any type of data or report that show us the number of positions that live in the city versus?
We do not have that on the city side, but we have asked and would like to see how we can get that. I think, I just think from conversation, a large percentage of our teachers live outside of our city. But we've asked for that, and we'll try and get it.
Okay.
Okay. Find a way to get it.
Well, I also have an impression that we want compatible with everybody else.
Well, that's why we wanted you to see this information.
I'd say we're right at average. Except in that.
Everybody's in the ballpark.
Except for in the 15, 10, 15 years.
Are you about ready?
Just have one more.
Oh, one more.
As a recap, the overall funding for lifelong learning as it relates to education is 71 million dollars. The local share is maintained at 52.8 million, and 13.6 million is provided through capital improvement projects, indirect and citywide funding paid directly by the city. Due to declining enrollment, school capacity, the declining local composite index, and inconsistencies in year-end balances, year-end balances in various reports, this budget recommends freezing the local share in development of school funding formula. Committee.
Mrs. Seward will come forth with a brief presentation on school funding formulas, which you will be hearing more about.
All right, so see you again.
Good to see you, yeah. I'm going to try to remember the clicker, right?
Hold on, not yet. We've got a new screen and everything.
Oh, gosh. Peter Martin.
Okay.
All right. Click right? All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. It's so good to be back with you. I see some new faces, and I see some wonderful, familiar faces. So thank you all for having me with you tonight. As the city manager mentioned, I'm going to review with you school funding formulas in Virginia and just share a little bit of information that I've gleaned in my career, and most recently, in some research that I've done in the area. But a few questions that we'll answer over the next few slides for you. First is, what is a school funding formula? Then we'll ask, how does it work? What communities in Virginia use school funding formulas? What needs to be decided when you're looking at school funding formulas and how to implement those? And then what are the pros and cons to consider before you jump into this? And then how would we develop one here for the city of Portsmouth if you choose to do so? So first, what is a school funding formula? It's basically, it's a mathematical calculation, so it's data-based, and it's done by the city annually to establish the amount of local revenue that would be appropriated to the school board in support of educational spending needs. So how does it work? Well, most of our funding formulas are implemented through some form of an agreement. So it can be codified either by ordinance or by policy, and it would outline the calculation, the entire methodology, as well as the administrative process that you would use each year in implementing that formula. So in a typical scenario, city staff would prepare the annual revenue estimates for the city, and then they would use the formula to calculate what the local contribution to schools should be in the upcoming budget. That amount would then be communicated to the school superintendent and to the school board, and they would use that number in the development of their operational budget for presentation to council. So then when we look at what communities use them in Virginia, well, there are both formal and informal formulas that exist in Virginia. So it's a little bit tough to figure out exactly how many are out there. Formal, there's no registry for localities that have them, but many of the formal models that exist, I've listed here, some of which have been out here for a long time. Virginia Beach's model, I believe, goes back to 1998. So they've been using it for a long, long time. Hampton, I think, was right around the same time period. Norfolk, you all may recall, just recently implemented one, I believe, last year. So their experience is a little limited. But the city of Roanoke, the county of Roanoke, and then up in our northern Virginia area, Loudon, Prince William, and Arbomarle, they all have formal formula policies. When we ask what needs to be decided, when you're looking at a school funding formula, there are a number of decision points that you need to review. And the first is, which revenues would be included? Now, what I'll talk to you a little bit about, in most of the formulas that you review, they include the general property taxes, which are your real estate and your personal property taxes, as well as those other local taxes, so meals tax, lodging tax, business license, et cetera, unless they have been dedicated for a certain purpose by council. And so in some localities, they may take the meals tax and dedicate that towards tourism operations. Or they may have certain streams that are dedicated towards economic development incentives. So most of the formulas that exist carve that out. If there's been a dedication, they are not included in the formula. So some other things that would need to be decided is, should there be an adjustment for changes in population served? Some school districts are growing, you know, at a drastic rate, some are declining. And so should there be a correlation between the population that they're serving and the amount of funding that goes towards them? So that would be one decision point. Secondly, we've got adjustments for state and federal revenue fluctuations, so much of what we just talked about. Schools receive funding not just locally, but they get money from the state and from the federal government. Many of you have been around the table to know that sometimes the state and federal numbers will swing up to their advantage, and sometimes they'll swing down. So many of the models out there do not consider that. So in the years where there are increases in state and federal funding, that would be a windfall to the school system. And in years where the state may draw back on funding, that would be something that they would have to adjust for within their funding model. Also, we would have to look at whether there should be procedures for the school board to be able to come and ask for a dedicated tax increase. So this should be something that would be, should be very uncommon, and it should only be for major new initiatives that they would like to implement. But you would need to have an avenue for them to come and to introduce that request to council. Another consideration is, should there be a true-up? Because with a school funding formula, it'll be based upon an estimate of revenues at the beginning of the budget. And clearly, by the time the year ends, we will know what the actual number is. So in many localities, they do include a true-up provision that would then designate a place for any surpluses. And most of the time, that would go towards capital or for your capital maintenance. So if you choose to include something like that in your funding model, you'd want to make sure that there are clear outlines of how that funding would be directed in years where there would be a surplus. And then lastly, you want to make sure that there are clear parameters around what that funding formula will provide for. So not just school operations, you would want to outline school capital, debt, and shared services. And much of what we just heard from Ms. Oglesby, you've got quite a bit of money that is currently working on the city side. So you would need to have all of that defined before you would enter into any kind of school. enter into any kind of school funding formula. So, when we talk very quickly about the pros and cons of a, of a school funding formula, the first is, on the pro, on the pro side, it manages expectations. So, going into every budget, there would be a known factor that the school would have, and they would build their budget around that number. And that would clearly help with, you know, you all, as a city council, have the responsibility of oversight for the tax dollars and for all services in the city. So, that includes education, public safety, health and welfare, parks and recreation. The school division have a narrower focus, but a very important focus on education. So, it makes sense that there would be some natural rub there. School funding formulas can, can at least help to ease that and hopefully eliminate that. Also, there's a level of certainty for future funding, because most of your formulas have what we call a smoothing effect. So, they will look back historically, and they will, they will project out, so you can kind of have a known of not just what you're going to be getting in revenues next year, but even the year after, and the year after. So, there, where there are curveballs, you have some time to adjust and anticipate that. On the con side, there is some reduced consideration for city council in the sense of, you look at the city as a whole, and so, what would happen with a school funding formula is, right off the top, there would be a slice out of revenues that would be dedicated and placed over here, and that would not be part of your purview in how you would address the rest of the service needs of the city. And it may not account, again, for those, for those federal and state funding swings, should you not include that in that formula. So, if, if you all were to move forward and to look into how we would develop a school funding formula, the recommendations here are that city council would appoint a school funding formula committee, and that would consist of both people, representatives from the city side as well as the school side. I would also recommend that you have one independent party who is, that, you know, rooted in education, but would be able to kind of serve as a facilitator at that committee level. I would suggest, too, that you look at a timeline, because clearly, if you do give this charge, you're going to want to get some response back and have this in place before you would go back into your next budget cycle. That committee would then research all of the existing models that are out there, looking at all of those elements that would best suit, because every locality is different. So, it's not a one-size-fits-all. They would have to review all of those elements that we just spoke about. They would then develop a recommendation for a model, as well as some administrative procedures that would be used each year in implementing that funding formula. That recommendation would be brought forward to council. You all would deliberate over that, and then, if you choose to adopt a policy, I would recommend that you codify that either by ordinance or by policy, so, so there's transparency as to how it would work, and, you know, there would not be any question from either body. So.
Questions?
Any questions you all have of me?
A couple of questions. I guess the first question is, I know that there was some considerations that need to be done before, you know, our funding, but also, I know liaisons, we had talked about a capacity study. Would that be one of the things that we would want, I mean, would that make any impact, or difference with that?
What Vice Mayor's saying, when Mr. Clark and Mrs. Lucas Burke met, and we've met two times, there are a list of 16 things, of which both parties, school reps and city reps, say it needed to be done. One was school capacity study, to see just what is actual school's capacity.
You have to mean, I'm sorry, the bodies and the building?
How many it could hold, and then how many other there.
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's what that means. And there were other things, and I guess to answer your question, yes, those things will have to be considered, and some discussion, and some move forward, before we're going to say, we're going to go off and create a formula. So, answer to your question is yes.
And then my second question is, city council codifying an ordinance or a city policy, is it just something we agree, or, or we also have the schools to agree to that, or both, both bodies?
Yeah, with people having to work together.
Shannon.
Ma'am, thank you for coming. My question is, you've obviously had a great deal of experience with these funding formulas. Do you see at the, at the end of the school year, at the fiscal year, whatever year they have, if there were dollars left over? Is that a commonplace? Is that something that doesn't happen with school formulas as well, or what?
Well, so, I always say, that's, you, you always want to end with more, not less, because if you end with negative, that's not good. So, in every scenario, a budget, again, is a series of estimates. It's always a series of guesses. So, at the end of the year, you should have a surplus. It shouldn't be large, you know, but there should be some surplus. And with this, you would want to have a designation of how that would be handled. Most of what I've seen out there is that it's designated towards school capital. So, if there's a surplus in the, in the funding formula, that would go and be dedicated to a reserve for school capital. On the city side, again, very similarly, to go towards capital needs, a one-time purpose, because it would be a one-time revenue stream.
Thank you. Paul.
Sometimes, as human beings, we think we know everything, and unfortunately, we don't. But is this study, could this study be less than what our school board is possibly getting at this time? Could be.
Well, so, in a year of implementation, it's a very good question, but in a year of implementing a school funding formula, the way you determine the percentage is you, you back into it. So, in the, in the kickoff year, you determine, you go through all those criteria, and you figure out, what are, what revenues are we going to include? Are we going to have a carve-out for dedicated revenue streams, et cetera? And once you make all those decision points, you then say, well, in the, in the current fiscal year, the school appropriation was X, the city total revenues were Y, you do the math, it will come out to some percentage, you know, it could be 22%, 25%. I mean, it, it's all over the map, depending on what you put into that formula. But that percentage is how you will kick off the funding formula in the following year.
Say, we have the goal. We've done the formula, and the formula says, we're going to start the school now, just giving them $200,000, $200 million. And before asking for the formula, the school was receiving $250 million. What I'm trying to say, sometimes the school board might not know and might be asking for something that, you know, is counterproductive to what they're trying to do.
Sure.
So, once we've done the study, and we see that, yes, if that's what you're begging for, we're going to give them the $200 million, and the city's going to save $50 million, and then the kids are crushed in between.
She says that, you won't do that.
That, that's not how it works, yeah.
It'll start like where you are.
Sure. So, so, so as an example, if, if I am, if I have $50 a year that I generate in my job, and I, every year, give you 10, the year that we determine, we make an arrangement where we will codify that I'm always going to give you that same ratio of revenue that I'm generating, that would be, so 10 divided by 50 would generate a percentage, and if the next year I make 60, I'm going to give you the same percentage of my new number.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how.
So, that's how that works. So, we're always, there will always be a correlation between the two of us and the amount of revenue that's being generated. Now, that also, you know, if there are years where revenues decline.
That's what I'm saying.
But in years of decline, the city isn't going to have it. If, if the city has declining revenues, then you, all of your partners are going to have to share in declining revenues, so.
Is it possible for the revenue increases from year to year still be less than what we've were given at, at the point you started?
Not, not if you have revenue increases, but if you had revenue decreases. A funding formula says, whatever percentage you were getting in the beginning, that will continue year over year. So, and, and that's, that's how all local governments live, when you have to live within your means. So, when revenues are down, everyone feels that. When revenues are up, everyone can benefit from that.
I want to interrupt just for a second. Dr. Patton just got a text from the emergency coordinator, and in the next half an hour to 45 minutes, things are going to get bad weather-wise, and so, we need to take that into consideration. Do you want to elaborate on that?
That was a text from Justin Arnold. He's been keeping you all abreast all day. I sent you the latest report, but he just said that we need to head toward home, because in the next 30, 45 minutes, weather's going to get very bad. They are all prepared. Should go all the way up until 1:00 a.m.
Now, Bill, let's get back on point.
Very quickly, I'm in favor of taking a look at the formula. I think it would be a much more transparent process. I think it would also allow both bodies, you know, school board, council, to do some pre-planning. And thirdly, it would take it out of that political battle that happens annually. There'd still, still be discussions, but the formula would be the formula. And anything above or below that would be up for consideration at that point. So, I'm in favor of at least looking at it.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Yeah, I agree. You know, looking at, including timeline, you know, I'd like to see them start in July and possibly have it done by December, of course, so it will be able to be when, you know, Dr. Patton's receiving all her budgets from all the departments, to get it in there for the, for the 2021.
We'd like to start in June.
Shannon, did you say you agree?
No, sir. I agree, yes, I do.
Okay. And I agree.
One last question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, if you come up with a formula, a percentage, and say it's a 7%, I mean, how often do we go back in? We don't, that's just forever and ever, amen?
You don't change it every year. No, no. It doesn't change every year.
It doesn't change every year.
Maybe another council 10 years out, or so, we'll re-codify. Ms. Shannon, right.
Now, current council came high the legs.
Right, that's why I say another council, right.
It's revocable.
Right. Thank you, Mrs. Seward.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I've completed the presentations for tonight. Go who, go who's.
It's been a good discussion. Thank you for the preparation. Solomon, I think we gave you a homework assignment.
Yes.
That came up.
Certainly.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Okay, everybody, good? All right, this meeting's adjourned.